Greetings all. We're ready to start our informal session today. And we're going to start off, City Manager briefing. Mr. Dehaney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council at this time. Our Finance Director, Letitia Shelton, will provide a monthly financial update.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer.
Welcome, welcome.
City Councils, Letitia Shelton, City Finance Director, here to present to you the interim. Is my mic on?
It should be on. It's on, yeah. It sounds like it.
Here to present the city's interim general finance, general fund financial report through May. As of May 31st, the general fund revenues of 955.4 million are 161.3 million more than FY '20. Real estate taxes, personal property taxes, and general sales tax all contribute to this increase. Also in FY '20, penalties and interest on both real estate and personal property taxes were waived until August 3rd, resulting in collections for FY '20 to be accounted for later on in the fiscal year. The general fund expenditures of $1,168.1 million, or 89% of the budget, to date. We are projecting a 40 million appropriation. I'm sorry. We are projecting 40 million to be appropriated from fund balance at the end year compared to the 124.5 million you currently see as budgeted. This slide tracks year-to-date general fund revenues and expenses comparing budget to actual. As you can see, the actual revenue of 83.8% are tracking, are tracking approximately 11.8% over the projected revenue budget of 72%. The actual expenditures of 89% are tracking 4.4% below the projected expenditure budget of 93.4%. As we take a look at the general fund local revenues, real estate taxes are 514.4 million year-to-date, or 88.5% of the general fund budget, which is an increase of 136.6 million from FY '20. This is also increased due to a 3.4% increase in assessed values. Personal property taxes, collections to date, are 68.3 million, or 65.2% of the budget. They're up 9.4 million over the prior year. Personal property taxes collected for the month of May only totaled 42.7 million compared to 33.0 million the same time last year. Other local taxes collected through May are 231.5 million, a 12.2 million increase over FY '20. As we look at the general fund other local taxes, year-to-date general sales taxes are 64.9 million, reflecting an increase from the prior year of 7.7 million. These revenues represent taxes collected through March. Business licenses are 53.3 million, an increase from the prior year of 1.2 million. Hotel room taxes are 6.7 million, or .3 million greater than FY '20. These revenues are represent, these revenues represent taxes collected through April. Restaurant meal taxes of 36.8 million represents the general fund share only, which is less than the prior year by .4 million dollars. This chart is showing a two-year monthly comparison of hotel, meal, sales, and admission taxes collected through June and May, through June, Texas, sorry. Taxes through June and through May of 2021. This chart reflects a two-year comparison of hotel tax revenues received by the city. This chart reflects a two-year comparison of meal taxes received by the city. Through May, general fund expenditures included in the commerces, again, are $1,168.1 million, or 89% of the budget, an increase over the prior year of 47 million. Budgeted personnel expenses are 31.1% of the general fund total budget. Year-to-date, 90% of the personnel budget has been spent. And as for the finale, we have received our first trench from the American Rescue Plan Act as of Monday. The county side, we received 43.7 million. And on the city side, we received 24.5 million. Staff will be working to develop the city manager's proposed ARPA allocation plan for the city council's consideration on how to spend this funding. This allocation plan will focus on the areas eligible, areas of eligibility based on the guidance provided by the U.S. Treasury. All funds must be obligated by December 31st of 2024. All projects for which these funds are obligated will need to be completed by December 31st of 2026. The next time you will see me is August 17th, 2021, where we will present a rough draft of the city's year-end income statement, financial projection. Any questions?
Okay, any questions? Mr. Moss.
Is there a delta between the ending fund balance that we estimated and appropriated in our budget in May versus the number that you cited today?
I would have to check.
Well, maybe the city manager can provide us an update. I'd just like to know if the amount that we appropriated was based on a certain estimate. I can't recall that number off of my head, but she said 40 million here. That sounds a little higher than the number that we appropriated in the budget. I would just like to know the delta, if we could please. That would be great. You also, if you go to Slide 5.
The general fund other local taxes?
If you, and this is, this sales tax is truly good through May 31st, correct? This is not a lagging number?
No, this is through May 31st.
Well, I think that's, maybe that's where some of the sources, because I do think, as I mentioned to you before, Mr. City Manager, I thought transactional revenues were going to overperform. I think that's also true for this year to my colleagues. It's going to tremendously over-improve. Just want to capture that. On Slide 9, you mentioned the CARES Act revenue balance. Is that the, is that the current balance? Or have we appropriated against that $10.4 million since May 31st?
You're talking about the contingency for the city?
Yes, that's the part we have set aside that council can act. I'm just trying to look at, I know that's a number that at every meeting, we tend to make, draw on that number. And if we could just get what the actual real balance is, if that's correct, that's great. But I think that's also part of our deliberations as we look at, you know, needs in the community where that, where that goes. Because that also has an obligation termination date that's sooner than 2026.
Yes, that's on December 31st of this year.
That's right. So that will be important in those discussions, Mr. City Manager, that make sure that we've obligated that money on a good purpose and can get it expended on time.
Okay.
And I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else at this point? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we are ready for any city council discussions or initiatives. Anyone? Okay, yes, Mr. Moss.
I have brought this up before, but I think anyone who's following, this gets back to my conversations earlier as we're looking towards the five-year forecast in October. And this is a time to be thinking about those trends. But if you look nationally since January, real estate values are up 14%. I have sent a question to our real estate assessor, because obviously MLS can give us an idea of how, what that's going to look like going forward. And also, used car sales are up 29% because of the shortage of new cars and ships. So they've gone up in value. So that will have a material impact on our personal property tax revenue. So we'll have some great overperformance. Starting July 1st, everyone who has a child between six and 17 will be getting a $300 a month check, and 250. And if they're under the age of six, it's 300. So we got to be able to demographically look at that number, Mr. City Manager, and understand that, what impact that will have on transactional revenues. And we got to be accounting for that in the five-year forecast. And lastly, I know we have a lobbyist in Washington. It would be great to get an update on what they see at the trend line of this infrastructure bill is, because we ought to have that information by the time we have our retreat in October. And we got to be looking at our, our options as well for that, so that we can do the most we can for flooding. But we might have some other bills that we can, could pay and do that we couldn't pull to the left before. And at the same time, look for opportunities for maybe tax relief. Or we can have a referendum with a much smaller tax increase bill because we've shifted costs around. So I think those are, are things I think we have to spend a lot of time and energy on before October so we can have a, a better picture to send to the public, as you've always wanted to do earlier in the year, about next year, and we could have a much more stable process. But those are my concerns on how we're planning the, the financial issues that are before us. Thank you.
Good. And anybody else? If I could just take a moment and wish the Moss family our thoughts, prayers, and sympathy of the loss of John Moss's mom. And, you know, John, once again, you will always be in our thoughts and prayers. And I'm sure the community is embracing you and your family during this time.
If I could, I really want to, can't say enough for the response from the community, both the prayers for my mom. Many of people knew her, recognition of her contributions to the community, and the great woman that she was. It just proves another reason why Virginia Beach is just one big family. I think people appreciate anyone's mom who passes, but I do appreciate very much the concerns that were expressed and the prayers. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, no, I know. My, you know, like, John, we feel for you. The other thing is, Mr. Wood is going to be a little delayed. He's on another conference call, but he will be joining us. And Mr. Moss, I'm sure you got the word that we are moving forward with a referendum, you know? And I know that's a subject near and dear to you.
I did, I didn't catch all that, because I was having the same problems connecting other people were. But I did go back and watch that piece. And that was a good discussion. And I'm going to catch up with Ron Williams for some details. But I'm glad we're, that's, I can't think of anything more important to the long-term future of Virginia Beach than to make sure people's homes and businesses are secured against all reasonable and predictable flooding circumstances.
Okay, you know, any other council comments or anything? Yeah, Ms. Wilton?
Just want to report on the Ignite Business Series Seminar that took place on Saturday this weekend. Just a very special thank you to the staff just for their commitment and support of this event. We did have about 80 participants or more, to include vendors. There was a viewer, I guess a viewership over the internet of over 777 members and participants viewing the information. We had dynamic speakers. Some of the feedback I received, just the content of the speakers, the information that was provided was just exceptional. And so just wanted to, you know, report back how things went on, on Saturday, and to commend the staff. Because again, I certainly could not do it without you. Just exceptional support from the staff. It just makes Ignite a really wonderful program for our community. So thank you.
Okay, anyone else? I'm going to be doing the consent agenda here in a second. Oh, yeah, Ms. Henry.
If we're on comments, I just have a question. As far as the city being open, are we, I mean, I know that, I had a call this morning of someone who was not able to get into one of the offices and had to make an appointment. Are we kind of back doing businesses as we were? Or do people still have to go through hoops to get into Seaford folks?
Councilmember Henley, we're going to send an update to council, kind of detailing where we are with the departments. But more or less, the direction we've given back to the departments was as soon as possible, try to get back to pre-COVID levels. You know, staff is going through some obstacles with that because everybody's having a difficult time hiring. But more or less, if it's not by June 14th, it should be by the end of the month that we are pretty much back to normal. There's going to be some employees that focus and still do hybrid stuff, but that won't be customer-facing to the maximum extent possible. And there probably are going to be some hourly restrictions in some of our services due to staffing. But we're working to get a comprehensive list that we can give the council on that. You know, but we're shooting to be able to more or less be open and back to normal by the end of this month.
Is your mic on, Barbara?
Sorry, I was looking. It was not as bright green as it was supposed to be. I know it's been a trying time for everybody. And, and, you know, it is difficult for, for our citizens if they need to get a permit or do some kind of action if they're not able to access folks. So as soon as we can get everything back to normal, it should be good.
Okay, Ms. Abbott, and then Mr. Moss.
I have a question about an agenda item. And I feel certain it's going to trigger a discussion, which is why I brought it up, I'm bringing it up now.
You want to bring it up during agenda review, or?
Well, I can, I'm happy to defer to Councilwoman Moss.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay, well, is Bobby, I can't see, is Bobby here?
Not yet.
No, okay, well, I'll ask it, and then he can get me an answer. On the short-term rental ordinance, 9E, it appears that we're adopting Planning Commission's version of that section, assuming we pass it. And one of the questions I had was brought up to me by another Planning Commissioner and a resident about if we adopt 9E as it's written, will all the conditional use permits that we have issued to, from October 2020 till today be void? Because that's what a Planning Commissioner told me. And that's what I, and that's kind of how it reads. And so I'm trying to get clarification on that. It's on page nine of 2E. And then it's also in the Planning Commission's version of 2E on page two. But on their version, it's white, there's no date. It just says, "Any short-term rental that receives a conditional use permit between November 1, 19, and then it's blank." And that is located within a zoning district where short-term rentals are not permitted or conditional use shall be considered grandfathered and shall be considered continued. I'm just trying to get clarification on it. Maybe it's that I was looking at it too late at night. But I want to make sure that I understand what that's saying, so.
You really should try Netflix.
Yeah.
Oh, John.
I wanted to piggyback on Councilwoman Henley's point. I hope as we emerge and get back to normal that fully, that we'll get some kind of report on to what extent the lessons learned from that, that we've moved anything to, for permanent working from home, and to what extent that has, that reduces our facility requirement total, and how that totaled reduction of facility requirements being reflected in the various budgetary requirements that we have. And that would be, I mean, I think working from home is great if it works. Doesn't work for every department, so you can't go after equity. But where it makes sense, we should be doing it. And certainly, that's a trend we see in industry. But I understand we, we serve customers, but so do they. So I would just like to know to what extent we were able to fully embrace that, or how many people are on hybrid. But I'd like to just, I realize we're not going to do that right away. But before I think November gets here, you got to be able to tell us what permanent changes we've made in our workforce and what our telework participation is. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? You know, I know, once again, I think, you know, I thank the city staff, the city management team, and all the workers. We've been through, when you think about what we were looking at, we were looking down a very dark tunnel at this time last year. And I think we came out pretty well due to the tenacity and resolve of many of the employees that were able to function. Now granted, we had some bumps along the way, but all things considered, you know, my kudos to the staff. And I think the other thing is a concern as we go into the consent agenda was, you know, some of the concern that Ms. Abbott just brought up about an item and everything. I know we're having a public hearing about this, but boy, let me just tell you, you know, personally, I'm not 100% sure I'm ready to vote on some of this. And I guess some of my concerns are the complexity about this, the division that's out there, you know, in terms of what to do. But also, you know, the fact that, you know, this seems to be applicable only to people that are following the rules. And I think that there have to be other considerations, you know, for people that are out there that are operating on a rogue status, not following the rules. So maybe as part of the discussion, I understand we have maybe 31 speakers, you know, to date, that maybe we consider, you know, perhaps deferring to vote because we're kind of right at the beginning of the season. But once again, this is just my personal thing. But as we go forward, we certainly should hear the speakers tonight. But, you know, personally, I'm uncomfortable voting. Ms. Henley.
I guess we've hit a landmark time, because it was very close to this date in June in 2015, that this whole issue started with the event houses. And so that's six years. That's a long time.
Yep.
It's about time for us to come to some conclusions.
Yeah, but once again, you know, I don't think, are we going to be solving the problem? And, you know, I'm just giving you my point of view, Mrs. Henley. We'll certainly take it as a body after, you know, we hear the folks. But just getting my view in. Okay, Ms. Wilson.
I agree with Mr. Mayor. I mean, before, when we went through and did the short-term rentals and albeit, we, albeit that we didn't do the best job last time, we still, we went through each item and got a consensus of who felt, you know, if there were enough, if there was enough support on each item. And we really haven't done that this time. And there's some things in here that's different than what we talked about, like the percentages and all of that, that I frankly don't quite understand. And I talked to some of our colleagues, and they said, "Well, I don't understand it either." So I think there's a, there's some things that we really need to flesh out. And this thing that Councilwoman Abbott brought up, if that's true, I don't think we want everything to be taken away from these folks. If they've gotten a conditional use permit, it seems like that's the taking. So we need clarification on that. I think we really should have a work, which, which what we did before? We had a workshop, and we would go through lines by line by line. And we, we really, I think we should do something like that. And then, I, I know how Barbara feels, because I was the beaches and waterways liaison and went to all those meetings. And so I personally have been dealing with it a long time as well. I mean, I'd like to be done with it, but I want to make sure we do it right so that we're comfortable with it. So I, I would support.
Okay, before we get to Mr. Tower, Mr. Stiles.
I just wanted to respond to Ms. Abbott's question. Ms. Abbott, if you're looking at, at the printed agenda, the second page of the ordinance dealing with 241.2, lines 80 through 84, is that the text that you're asking about?
Yeah, and I guess I was worried because it's, there's no date.
Well, that was going to be the date of this adoption.
Oh, okay.
So what that essentially says is, if a CUP was granted after CUPs were available and before the date of this ordinance, then that C, and that CUP exists in a zone that after this ordinance is no longer eligible for a CUP, that CUP continues as a grandfather, just like as if it had been grandfathered, the ones that were originally grandfathered. So it does not end.
Let me ask a clarifying question, because I think this is where the confusion is. So if I've already applied for a conditional use permit before today, and I've gotten it, then I'm good for five years, correct?
If you've already gotten your CUP, it would essentially, based on this, be good indefinitely.
So you're grandfathered it with administrative approval of, after the five-year period?
You would be grandfathered, and you would only lose it if you were brought forward for a violation of some of the regulations, and this body revoked it.
So then?
It would be like any other grandfathered in those same areas.
What is it if, if I'm, if I'm pending an application, and this gets adopted tonight, is, is my application, do I still go through the process?
Under the, under the transition rules, which is a separate ordinance in here, once you adopt this ordinance, if, if, if a CUP were not eligible, if you were not eligible for a CUP at your location, your CUP would be denied.
Would we still hear it?
No.
Okay, so it's just your application's effectively pooled? If we adopt this tonight, and you, even if your application was submitted in January and just hasn't gotten to us, it doesn't matter?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted clarification on.
Okay, Mr. Tower.
I was just going to say, Mr. Mayor, I really regret that Mr. Wood's not here. If we're going to have a discussion about deferral and why it's being deferred, I, I'm very concerned that Mr. Wood is not able to hear this discussion. He's got the biggest stake of anybody, I think, in this.
We're not discussing it at this point because we're going to hear it tonight, and Mr. Wood will be here. I was just giving you my concern about voting.
I, I don't object to that. I just, and I, I just would not, I would caution against further discussion. Hopefully, we could defer it until Mr. Wood's here to hear it.
That's going to happen. He'll be here for the formal session.
But that's not my point, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. My point is, I think he should hear the concerns of council. And that's what I want to make sure he hears.
Be assured he'll hear that tonight, especially after input from the public. Okay, so at this point, if it's okay, we'll go ahead with the consent agenda, as Mr. Wood does. Does anybody have any objections to any of the ordinances and resolutions? Mr. Moss. You got your mic on?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be voting no on item 1B, but I will give my reasoning at the end, as I always do. I'll be voting no on 6C, 6D, 6E.
6, 6B, D, and E?
No, 6 Charlie, 6 Delta, 6 Echo.
Okay.
And that captures my thoughts on the ordinances and resolutions. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, at this point, we will go forward to planning. Item, anyone, item one, ocean rental properties for change in nonconformity to redevelop with eight-dwelling use on Norfolk Avenue Beach District. Are we good, good on consent? Item number two, South Haven LLC modification of conditions to allow vacation of easements for their construct use at 877 South Windhaven District 3 Rose Hall.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to know if we have any speakers on that. I, I thought that was being deferred by the applicant.
The applicant has requested deferral per the agenda to July 6. We haven't, we don't have any speakers signed up yet.
Okay, so could it be on consent for, I'd like to add it to the consent for deferral.
Consent for deferral.
To July 6.
To July 6.
All right, number three, Robin Gunther, CEO on behalf of the Samaritan House Incorporated, Catholic Diocese of Richmond, Virginia, Episcopal Diocese of Southeastern Virginia, conditional use permit for a group home at 1593 Windhaven Parkway, Centerville. Ms. Wilton.
I'm good to have that on the consent agenda if there are no speakers.
Okay. Number four, BPMS Cascades LLCs for conditional use for a mini warehouse at 2121 Centerville Turnpike. Ms. Wilton.
The same. If there are no speakers, consent is fine.
Okay. Number five, SH Campus LLC, St. Luke's United Methodist Church for a conditional use permit for a group home at 3396 Stonehouse Rose Road, District 3, Rose Hall.
Mr. Mayor, I understand there are no speakers who are signed up who are in opposition to the project, but I anticipate there'll be speakers from the applicant. And so I'd like to hear, I'd like to.
Okay. Okay, and number six, Diana Berman, Michael Corritelli for conditional use permit for a family daycare at 998 Baton Ray and Rose Hall.
Okay, to add for consent, thank you.
All right, number seven, Misty Wood for conditional use permit for a daycare home at 1105. at 1105 Voss Court. And that would be Princess Anne. Okay. And number eight, ordinance, amend city zoning ordinance, see sections 2, 10.2, 212, 215, 216, and 217, raise signs and billboards. Okay. Is that okay for anybody to object to that one?
I don't object, but I would ask that at a future date, that the city attorney come back and give us an update.
Okay. And then obviously, number nine will be heard, okay? All right, now we will move on. Now, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meeting allowed by Section 2.237 11A. Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes: publicly held property, discussions or considerations of acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect a bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 3. Beach District, Beach District, Beach District, Beach District, Beach District, Beach District. You have a busy agenda, Mr. Tower, coming up.
Wow.
And Princess Anne to be included also. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect a negotiating or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 7, Holloway et al. versus City of Virginia Beach, and Bousset et al. versus City of Virginia Beach. And next, our personnel matters. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 1. Do I have, oh, also council appointees, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a mo?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Could we call the vote, please?
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Lucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley? Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse? Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.